Mr. Semenaro here. Mrs. Hamel?
Here.
Mr. Kurts?
Here.
Mr. McCullough here. Mr. LeBlanc, Mr. Potts?
We can do that for fine.
Mr. Shaheen?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
And Mr. Basil?
Here. Okay, under announcements, we'll be having an executive session after this meeting for personnel litigation. Also, this meeting is being recorded. Having said that, opportunity for public comment is on the inside cover. You have limited to three minutes. And having announced that, are there any comments from the public on agenda items only? Okay, seeing none, Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Basil. I'd just like to update everyone on our student activities. This is kind of a transitional time of the year. The fall athletic season has officially ended, as you know, with our last playoff football game that occurred before Thanksgiving. Now practices for all of our winter sports are in full swing and game competitions will actually start for high school sports next week, toward the end of the week, and then the following week for middle school. The high school fall play takes place this Friday and Saturday. The name of the play is Babel. It's a play with which I am not familiar, so I'm expecting that will be good as it's been advertised. I don't know if anyone from the high school unders... what's the play about? There's kind of a description in the...
I understand. I read the description.
Okay.
It's about a high school debate team, I believe.
Okay.
And they do something with...
Thus the word Babel.
Yes.
So, and then, starting December 12th, all through the following week, the week December 12th, each school will be holding its respective holiday music concerts, and we certainly welcome you to come out and partake of some good musical entertainment to get into the holiday spirit. On December 20th at the high school, we will hold our annual Angela Hall Blood Drive, and that takes place in the Daniel Boone High School Annex. And I'm sure all of you know the story, the unfortunate story about Angela Hall, but that's a good thing to bring out to community for a blood drive. Even though we will have another board meeting, just again, this is kind of out of our norm, connected to our committee, or our reorganization committee, this is our one time of the year where we have a meeting on an off night, so we will go back in January to second Monday and fourth Monday of the month for our meetings. Our next board meeting will be December 19th. The holiday break for students and staff starts at noon, well, noon for students, on Thursday, December 22nd, and then school will reopen in the new year on Tuesday, January 3rd. So, that kind of concludes my report. Again, a transitional time here in the year, moving kind of from the fall to the winter activities.
Okay, under curriculum instruction, no updates?
We did have a meeting that, obviously, that first Thursday, and every single one of you owe me because Mrs. Trainer is going to make her presentation to us instead of the entire board, and then give you guys a small version of it, so...
Condensed.
A condensed version of her power panel, so...
Okay. Any comments from board members? Mrs. Trainer, do you want to throw in a...
A dig back?
A dig or a comment, or...
No, but I would certainly schedule anyone who would like the full version, Kevin. I guess it'd be...
He's going to be there anyways.
He's there anyways. She volunteered, didn't know it.
He volunteered, but didn't know, yeah.
Excuse me, what date is that? No, seriously, what date is that?
The 9th of January.
Okay.
He's marking that down. He's going to be out of town.
No, no.
Okay.
You can put it on the web, on the webpage. That way you can just watch it whenever you have it.
No problem.
Okay, any comments from the public?
Thank you, Lomine. I just wanted to add to the student activity that I just got word today and shared with Mr. McElmough this afternoon. About three weeks ago, I took three of our seniors to the Berks County Math Competition. And each of the 17 high schools brings three of their seniors. They compete in a written exam. They give a team placement as well as an individual. And I got a call this afternoon, after the students had already left, unfortunately, that our team, and it was Ashley Kutts, Jacob Reck, and Hunter Foster, they placed second of the 17 schools in the county.
Excellent. Wow, fantastic.
Additionally, they correctly placed second of the 51 individuals who competed.
Wow.
So, I'm hoping in the future we can bring them...
We will certainly bring them forward for recognition, absolutely.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you, Mrs. Romaine.
Do they now move on to another level, or...
No, it's just Berks County, that's it, unfortunately.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, buildings and grounds?
I just want to update. Mr. Smith has given me a brief update on the high school boiler installation. It's going very well. I know Mr. Potts had asked us before about getting the other quote for security at the high school. We have reached out to the other company, ADT. They just really have not gotten back to us. We're being as aggressive as we can. So, we do have one quote already. We're still going to wait for that one before we bring that forward. We'll probably have that for the January facilities meeting on that agenda.
And he did mention in the email today something about, was it AIC they had, the electrical blowout?
Yes, that's...
Yeah, and so there were some fluctuations with the controller there, the panel. He's got it on manual now, so if there's, for the benefit of the public, if there's... things aren't running the way they should be, they're working on it and addressing it over there. Any comments from the board on anything having to do with buildings and grounds? Okay, any comments from the public?
All right, seeing none, moving on to finance.
Okay, we will be bringing forward, again, for the new board members, every month, we bring forward the new course approvals for reimbursement for those teachers who are still seeking that. Item B is our annual bid with the DCIU for art and general supplies. We also have on the agenda an attachment you were provided for two real estate, real estate tax refunds due to reassessment or assessment reductions and exonerations. Also, we will be bringing forward a vote on Plan Con Part K. I know you've done some research, Danielle.
Well, I would like both of you guys, if you just could, just take a minute to kind of explain Plan Con in general for the benefit of the board, what the different parts are, what it is this has to do with, because it's, I think, for a lot of board members, it's Greek. And so if you guys could just kind of explain that, what it is, why we do it after projects and things of that nature, where the money comes from, and what we're actually doing next two weeks, that'd be really helpful, I think, for the board, particularly new board members.
Go ahead, Danielle.
Plan Con is an acronym that Pennsylvania Department of Education gave to their topic of Planning and Construction Workbook. Plan Con is actually a set of forms used for a school district to apply for state reimbursement for a major construction project. The Plan Con forms are designed to document a district's planning process, provide justification to the public for the project, determine compliance with state rules and regulations, and to establish the level of state participation in the cost of the project. The Division of School Facilities within the Department of Education is the one who reviews all of the Plan Con documents. There's Plan Con Parts A through J, and then there is a Part K. Plan Con Part A is for project justification. B is for the schematic review. C is site acquisition if applicable. D is project accounting based on estimates. E is the design development. F is the construction documents. G is the project accounting based on bids. H is the project financing, which is where the temporary percentage is given. I is the interim reporting. J is the project accounting based on final costs, which is where the permanent percentages are given. And K, which this one on the agenda is referring to, is for projects refinancing. The Division of School Facilities actually calculates the state reimbursement for all qualified projects, as well as reviewing and approving the financing for reimbursable projects. This particular one on this agenda was our 2001 bond series, Was It Part of a Plan Con Project? So, it went through the A through the J. We refunded that in 2011, so since it's a refunding, it falls under Part K.
Okay. In a summarized way, Plan Con, these different things that you will hear are basically an indirect form of subsidy back to school districts for costs that we incur. That's kind of maybe an oversimplification, but it'll help you kind of get your head around really what it is. And what it eventually becomes is revenue back to the district, that we can count it in our budgetary figures and use it in moving forward with the district's budget.
All right.
I have a question about Plan Con, Part K, Part D. Is that for a specific project?
So, as Ms. Penza just sort of explained, back in 2001, we had a project. Which project was it?
Well, I know 2000... I don't know what...
No, that would have been AIC, probably.
No, I don't know what specifically the 2001 was for. I know it's part of the J that the board approved us to getting an consultant to help us with for the new middle school project. So, we went out and got new funds for the middle school project, but the remainder of this 2001 is also tied to that.
Gotcha. And then what happened last year was we had an opportunity to refinance the bonds at a lower rate, and because the board did that, that opened up the Plan Con K that we're now seeking funds for. And some of that money was applied for last year, and it counts coming in this year, and some of it we're applying for this year that's coming into latter half of this year. Altogether, it's around $125,000.
Okay.
But it's important to note that that was budgeted. That's not found.
Right, it's not new money.
All right, thank you. Have we filed all the Plan Cons for all of our projects everywhere?
As far as I know, I don't...
Monopoly?
As far as... Monopoly was done when I got here. Mr. Wersler was working on that when I got here.
Okay, so AIC, Monopoly, the middle school...
Annex.
APC and the annex. Those are the five we need to make sure.
APC wasn't a Plan Con project. That was ESCO.
Neither was the annex.
So, was the annex, then.
The annex was...
Right, they were ESCO, so they're off the...
So, middle school, AIC, and...
Middle school, you already voted on. That will be coming to you, hopefully, in January to approve submitting for Plan Con J for the middle school.
Okay.
All right.
As far as I know, I can't...
Thank you for taking the time to prepare that and explain it, because, you know, unless you're doing this as a educator, it's very confusing.
And again, that's why I mentioned that it's good news with these Plan Con things. Usually, there's some kind of money coming back to the district to defray some of the astronomical costs that are involved in construction.
Is it related to what fund it can be returned to, referred to?
I have to defer to Mrs. Penza for that.
The reimbursement? The reimbursement goes to the general fund.
Good question.
That is a good question.
Okay, so moving on to E.
Oh, okay, before we're done with that. We have received a donation, and the board typically accepts these through resolution from the Daniel Boone Optimist Club toward the purchase of an interactive whiteboard for the high school. I see Mr. McElmough's here in the audience. I know he's been involved in this. Do you want to just speak briefly to that, Mr. McElmough?
Yes, the Optimist came in to meet with me and asked me if there, what we might need at the high school. I said we could use some more smart boards, and that would go towards the, it's about half the cost of a smart board. And Tom Kirchner, whose name was mentioned earlier, is president of the Optimist, and he came in with Pia Clifford and her husband, who are also Optimists, had a demonstration by Mrs. Pittler, one of our biology teachers, and they were really impressed with what the smart board can do, and so they gave us the thumbs up to donate the money for the smart board.
Very generous of them.
Yes, so we'll make sure they, once it's, you know, you accept it as a gift, we'll make sure they're thanked and move on from there.
Okay, moving on to F, I'll kind of take it from here. The finance committee met prior to the meetings tonight, and we discussed the 12-13 budget, preliminary budget. Right now, we're looking at a $3 million deficit. There's still a lot of assumptions being made, and it's not definitive as of yet what our level of funding will be from the state. And there's some discussion regarding the special education budget, and we were provided with some information that sort of justified those numbers. We're also looking at transportation and...
Potentially special education funding, how it's going to be funded next year.
Correct, right. So, there is a couple of different things that we discussed. I will forward the updated documents that we had to the rest of the board, so you all have them as well, and can take a look at them and can ask some questions. I'll wait, actually, until you make those, a couple of adjustments to them, and then we'll, you might as well just send them out to the whole board. The other thing we talked about was the use of the Interest Rate Protection Fund. When the school district did a bond swap a number of years ago in 2007, a sum of money of about $1.2 million was set aside into a special fund that was designated to protect the school district from swings in the interest rates. So, the way the swap has worked, essentially, the school district engaged in a swap between its variable rate interest that it was paying on an existing set of bonds for a more fixed-rate interest rate. Unfortunately, interest rates went down instead of up, so we have negative interest payments that we've been making over the last few years as opposed to accruing interest payments from our swap partner. Traditionally, we had not been taking the additional interest rate payments out of this fund. They've been funded from our general fund. This past year, those negative interest payments had been made out of this particular fund. And so, as a finance committee, we were basically recommending that going forward, any swings in interest rates that require additional payments on behalf of the school district come out of that fund as opposed to the general fund, which is what it's actually supposed to be there for. So, that was part of that discussion. And hand in glove with that was the idea of terminating the swap altogether. So, we learned at the last meeting where we had the audit that this past June, the value of the swap was a negative $1.1 million, where traditionally it had been a negative $3 million or more. And so, we had an opportunity, if the board had wanted to, to terminate that swap, use the $1.2 million to get that accomplished, and we wouldn't be in a situation where we'd have, you know, potentially negative interest going forward. Essentially, what a swap is, is you're betting which way interest rates are going to go. We bet they were going to go up, instead, they've gone down, and as long as they're lower, then the benchmarks that are set up within the derivative will continue to pay negative interest rates. If interest rates go up and it crosses a particular threshold, then we would receive interest payments from our partner. So, as a board, we'll need to discuss which way we think things are going to go, and whether we want to terminate the swap or we don't want to terminate the swap, based on what your personal opinion is of the economy and interest rates going forward. That's near here and there right now. I think what, in order to terminate the swap, the, a resolution was provided to the finance committee that's drawn up by the bond council, which would set a threshold. So, as a board, if we determined that the valuation of that swap hit a certain level, that we would authorize the district to automatically terminate. And so, we need to, as a board, make a decision as to what is that level? Is it, is it negative $1.2 million? Is it negative $1 million? Is it negative $900,000? Is it negative $2 million? Where do we want to terminate the swap? And so, that was something that we discussed as well. There's a little bit more information that we need to get. We were going to try to find out whether or not all the previous interest payments that we had made, which sum about $330,000, whether those could be, we could take funds from the Interest Rate Protection Fund now and use this to sort of refund the monies that we had paid over the last few years, whether we can even do that. We're trying to get information as to what the valuation of the derivative has been since its inception. Has it always been negative $3 million something or other, or is it, have we hit, you know, negative a million or negative $500,000 or negative $2 million at other points in time? Because the way the derivative works, it's actually based on two different interest rates, LIBOR and SIFMA, and they tend to go in inverse directions. So, someone needs to monitor the fund going forward. We've authorized F and S, or Financial...
Financial SNL.
SNL to monitor the valuation for us and then provide us with notifications going forward on a weekly basis as to what the valuation of that derivative is. So, as we get more information on this, we will be sharing it with the board. I think some of the preliminary information we learned also that wasn't really discussed in the finance committee is that the additional costs actually unwind the transaction. We think they're anywhere between, what was I saying?
Thirty, thirty-six.
Thirty-three and $60,000. So, somewhere in that range. There'll be some legal costs, there's some administrative costs on the part of the bond advisor, and then Wachovia would charge us one or two basis points to unwind the transaction, the basis points.
It's going to cost us money over the next couple of years, and with interest payments that we need to make. Until the economy turns around, we may actually make money. We may not make money off of this, but it's true or there's something. I would think that if, if we can get out of it by using the money that was set aside for interest payments and walk away clean and put this to bed, it's probably the best, because waiting two, three, four years, we're going to chew up a bunch of that money, and it may not turn around enough that it's worth it. They go the other direction where, you know, we're upside down $3 million versus $900,000 right now.
Right, so, I think what we're going to do at the finance committee level at least is, we're going to gather some more information, we'll make a, you know, we'll make a presentation to boards, and one, everybody understands what the derivative product is and how it works. I think that's the first thing you need to understand, so that then you can know, this is the way it works, and now you can have an opinion on what might be the best threshold if we do want to set a threshold for terminating the swap. Or, at least, when the bond council is providing to us updates as to what the value of this thing is, you can make a more informed decision. So, collectively, we're going to have to make this decision, but I think to start is educating everybody on the board as to what the product is, what the issues are surrounding it, the pros and cons of either staying in it or getting out of it, and then, you know, we'll have a discussion about it. Okay? And I will forward whatever information that we have gleaned to date, once it's a little bit more comprehensive, directly to the board for your consumption. And if you have questions, you can call Danielle or anybody, I guess, on the finance committee to discuss those things. All right? Any board comment on anything having to do with finance?
Yeah, I have one comment. Just, I think it's probably worthwhile. I want to back up a little bit. I have a really, just a brief discussion for the sake of the new board on the process of the budget and how we get from where we are today to June 30th, and some of the flow of what the expectation is going to be from all of us to try to get that done. When we have to vote on budgets, preliminary budgets, final budgets, you know, what our objectives are and how we use our workshops in order to, as a mechanism, to try to balance the budget.
Why don't you talk a little bit also? I didn't mention it in regards to what has to happen on the 19th.
There's a preliminary budget that has to get submitted to the state that we, as a board, need to approve before it gets submitted to the state. There is an option that we have on the 19th to say that we are not going to, we are not going to raise taxes or go to the, go, apply for the index. We can make a motion on the 19th to make that decision right then and there and say we're not going to, we're not going to raise taxes, and we send that to the state.
Above the index.
Above the index, which is...
2.3 percent.
2.3 this year. If we make that motion on the 19th and submit that to the state, we have to live to that.
That's about point six, that's about point six.
About $600,000.
About $600,000. Generally, by December 19th, you don't know nearly enough information to make that kind of decision, but that's, that's your call on how you would vote on that on the 19th, but just so you're prepared, so you can expect that, that's, that's what happens. So, that's the first point.
That's option one.
Process. Option two is you say, no, I can't make that, you know, we can't make that determination now, and you just continue on. And that's not saying you will raise taxes, that's just saying you're leaving your options open to potentially raise taxes and not cutting that off on the 19th. Above the index again.
I have a question. If we do decide and we say we're not going to raise taxes above the index, do we still need to post the preliminary budget?
No.
No.
Okay.
Everything we do is, as Semenaro was saying, everything we do is procedural. The only thing that actually counts is that vote on the 25th of June. And a lot of people in past boards have gotten tied up with these individual votes to post, to public view and everything else, that that June 25th is the only vote that counts.
That's D-Day.
That's D-Day.
Actually, June 30th.
Because, obviously, just again, I'll say stuff that you probably already know, but the school operates on a fiscal year, which begins July 1st. That's why June 30th is the date. And the board has to submit a balanced budget. The budget has to be zero, so we've got to take our revenues and our expenses and make that all equal zero some magical way. And that consumes most of our time during the month of January, February, March, April, May, and June. And how we try to do that is, Danielle provides us with lots and lots of information. Everyone else in the school district, Dr. Otto organizes them to provide us with information as well, so we can help move that along. And we have what we refer to as workshops. And this is in addition to our regularly scheduled meetings, committee meetings, board meetings. We'll have a workshop meeting as well to go over various items in the budget and debate them and try to figure out if there need to be, if there needs to be cuts, where those cuts are and how deep they need to go, and how we get to a balanced budget, so...
I'm hoping some of the committees can bring some ideas ahead of time. I personally do not want to go through what we went through last year at the committee meetings. I believe that if each, on the individual, you have buildings and grounds, curriculum, finance, can bring recommendations on how to pare that budget down, then maybe we have one workshop where we present to the public...
It's a good idea.
...these ideas, then we're not sitting for three and a half hours. It was torturous last year, and I'm not sure anybody wants to go through four or five of those meetings again.
Particularly now where we have the option of recording these meetings, you know, if we do have a small subset of board members working through some of the details, and you're interested in knowing more, we have access now to those recorded meetings that we could utilize that as well.
It's a, you know, look, nothing's set in stone. I mean, when I, my first year here, budget was in the finance committee, so it came, and everything's been pushed forward this year just because of the primary. We're ahead one month, so typically, we wouldn't be making this vote until January, but we're forced to do it December 19th.
You're not voting on the 19th?
Well...
Per se.
Per se.
It's not a formal motion to vote.
You could make it a formal motion to vote not to go above the index.
That, yes.
Or, you just say, look, we're presenting, we're posting our budget as it is and...
And you make the actual vote on the preliminary in January.
Right.
Put it there, Danielle, just keep us straight and narrow on the 19th.
Well, I'm trying, because I have dates, I have to advertise this stuff, so if you're talking about voting, then that just backs everything up, so we have to...
Right, so, I guess, but where I was going with this was, this has changed every year that I've been here, and it'll change again this year. So, the process is one of, we hope, continuous improvement, and, you know, hopefully, we'll get to something that works really well as a board to analyze our budgets going forward and provide opportunities for board members to ask questions and push back on the information they see, and so that, at the end of the day, we end up with, with good decisions, so...
Three, four years ago, we had all these committees, and Mr. McCullough was probably years long. Some of these committees didn't meet quarterly, and now we're doing monthly meetings and can take some of the responsibility of looking at individual budget line and curriculum instruction, building and grounds, and meet and discuss, and it takes a lot off of the plate from the overall board, can bring recommendations back and hopefully carve that $3 million down to something that's manageable by the board or the finance committee.
Yeah, I mean, I think we changed the process, because in the past, the finance committee had handled the budget, and unless you were on the finance committee or at every of those meetings, as a board member, it went into this box and then magically came out again in May, and there was really no input from the rest of the board on the budget, and certainly not enough time at May, if you did want to have input to make a lot of changes. So, my second year here, it was suggested that we do it as an entire board, and at that time, we had administrators coming in and explaining parts of their budget to us. It was a real eye-opening experience, I think, for board members to understand how the district assembled the budget, the numbers, and it gave us an opportunity to ask deep and probing questions, and it was, you know, information wasn't limited to a committee where, you know, unless you were paying attention as an outside board member, you wouldn't be aware of what was going on. So, it's, you know, every year, it's changed a little bit, so hopefully this year will be better. We'll see. You guys have a lot to do with that, so... Any, yes?
It's not necessarily about finance, but you brought up something about committees. I noticed some other districts, they put committees on their website, so you could see who's on each committee. Is there any way we could do that here? Because I think that would be convenient for members of the public. If they want to contact a member of that committee, then they'll know who's on that committee.
Yeah, I don't think there's any issue.
I think it was, to be honest with you.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
That's just a communication issue, we can handle that.
The board members' decisions, just, you just have to probably add it right below it then.
We can do that, that's easy.
Okay, you got that down here?
Sure, we can make that.
To-dos, all right.
That's easy. I'll be there tomorrow.
Any other comments from board members?
Well, when it's official.
On finance issues? Okay. Any comments from the public on finance?
Shane Cockle, 8:30 Geiger Town Road. Having a $3 million deficit, I would ask the board to try, do what you can to not cut anything educational. No more programs to be cut. It's a shame we lost full day kindergarten, that's gonna impact the school for those students and testing and keeping up with, with the other students in the state, in our county. So I would like to just stress to the board, please, don't cut any more education. Look at things that really didn't get touched with the last budget cuts. There's a lot of things that skated by that wasn't impacted. The stuff that's not mandated by the state, look at that. Don't cut programs that are already leaning. I mean, I, I would hope that the school district, taxpayers realize we're paying taxes for education. And I think taxpayers understand when our money's going to education, you know, they can understand it, but when taxes, when taxpayers' money's not going to education, I think that's where people have a problem with, with the tax situation. So if you can, please, don't cut anything more in education. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from public? Okay, we'll move on to personnel.
Under personnel, just for the benefit, first time through for the new board members, there, there's always a section here on retirement resignations. If there aren't none, we simply don't post anything. The second section, item B, is always leads. It's not our tendency to read these names, they're there for your information. If there are any questions, board members can certainly ask individual questions about them. Appointments are there for each levels of different professionals that might be appointed for whatever.
Dr. Otto, can we stop right there?
Sure.
I see one individual going on professional leave and then I see two individuals replacing that one individual on leave at full-time pro-rated rates. Is that a typographical error or...
One's doing the first three weeks and then the other one is gonna do the remainder of the leave. There was a scheduling conflict?
It's not the way it's written here. They're both starting approximately December 19th.
We'll adjust, Mrs. Booth. She's second, she's just...
Just adjust the dates.
Yeah, we can adjust the dates.
Yeah, on the agenda, that's all.
Again, I mean, it looks like we're gonna approve both of these two individuals to start on the same date, the two one individual's job.
Yeah, we could, we'll just modify the dates.
We'll just change Mrs. Booth's starting date.
We'll have that, before you vote on it, we'll make that correction. Is that it then for that?
Yeah.
And moving forward, under...
Well, just typically, I mean, a lot of times what you'll see is if there's a professional leave or retirement, then to, you know, when you get to appointments, you're gonna see and on there, who's actually gonna replace that position. So we try to spell that out, so you can see where the hole is created and then where the fill comes in. And it's a nice way to sort of...
Right.
Take a look at it.
Under extracurricular, there are always, again, seasonal things that come through, so we put them through. We try to have them all ready. If something would change between now and the, the voting meeting, or in addition, we would certainly alert you to that through my board update and let you know that those things have changed. Substitute staff we approve, volunteers we actually approve at the board level, and then any transfers that occur. And we'll give you, as Mr. Sheen pointed out to you, as much background information as we need to for the appointment. So beyond that, there's really nothing to say on personnel. It's usually fairly routine, unless there's something special that we need to point out to you.
I have a question about the assistant musical directors. I noticed, I went back into previous, the previous minutes, and it seems like the, the salary has increased almost double from the previous year. Can I get an explanation for that?
It's part of our contract, so...
The contract doesn't stipulate that, I know that you have to increase the amount per each unit, you have to increase that, but it doesn't go up that much, I don't think. Is there a difference?
Years of experience.
Years of experience, that's a lot...
Go ahead, Mrs. Trainer, Ken.
Okay.
In the contract, in the year you're referring to, two people split one position.
Okay.
Each year, the director has the option of giving a spot to one person or to multiple people. And if it's multiple people, we, I take the salary and divide it over multiple people. This, in this particular year, there's only one person in each spot. That's why it looks like it's significantly increased.
Okay. So did last year, did we have, so last year, did we have only one assistant musical director position, but we had two people filling that position? Or did we have two high school assistant musical directors?
And there were multiple people in each?
There were multiple, all right, thank you.
And the difference in the salary of D and E is just reflective, again, of the contract where you get additional money for years of service?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Excellent.
I have a question. Mrs. Trainer, are we sure that everybody that is on this list, because I know you do most of it, is qualified and certified to be in the positions that you're asking us to fill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
How do we determine qualification for these items? Just for...
I was assuming Mr. McCullough was referencing professional staff?
Correct.
Or highly qualified classified staff for special ed positions, not for the extracurriculars?
Okay, correct.
Under state law, sidebar, certification requirements force us to employ people only who meet the specific requirements and have the credentials to fulfill that position.
If they're not certified secondary yet, you can't put them in there.
Right.
So my question was, I wanna make sure everybody that's on this list is qualified to do what she's asking you to be placed.
I hope I'm not asking too many questions.
No.
No, no.
Not at all.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay.
Comments from the...
Well, let me just scroll down here, so I know where I'm going.
All right, any comments from the public on that item?
Shane Cockle, 8:30 Geiger Town Road. Qualifications for music directors, is there also qualification for sports coaches?
There's no qualifications for music directors, those are, those positions, we're talking professional staff.
Mr. Cockle, to answer your question, for coaching, in, in the state of Pennsylvania at least, there is no formalized requirement from the state that, that says you have to have X, Y, or Z certificate. It's generally predicated on the interviewing process by the athletic director and the other coaches that get involved in that. They do have to, I think they have to go through some kind of training for certain things, but there's no specific, there's no specific document that you would look at that says you're qualified to coach wrestling or qualified to coach football or whatever it might be.
And then that, I mean, that might be a policy that you can look into. If you're gonna hire and pay, you know, we'll say a football coach?
Mm-hmm.
Or, you know, assistant football coach or a baseball coach and pay him by $6,000, I would hope we were, we would be hiring someone who has some kind of experience or some kind of qualification in the sport that they're, they're coaching. We have a lot of parents that just follow their, their kids up through the sport and that's basically their own, only qualification to coach that sport.
Man, or, Mrs. Trainer, do we have job descriptions for coaches? I know we have them for most positions, so we...
For all the...
We, we do have a book on, on file that lists the job qualifications. So in a sense, the board kind of has approved what they expect in a given position.
And also, I would assume that the principal, a high school and middle school principal and athletic facilitator would, would do some of that background check and make sure that they've actually coached said sport before they applied.
I'm just saying you might, I mean, we're coming up with all these other policies, that might be a policy to consider.
Again, there's no certification.
You know, making sure there's some kind of athletic training, coaching in the past, or something to qualify a tax, taxpayers' money to pay for a, a position that someone's really not qualified to, to be in.
I, I, again...
Filling out a job description.
Any, any policy would be at the discretion of the board. I think what we have, I, I do believe the board approves all job descriptions, so I think we kinda have that covered indirectly through our job description process. There's a job description, frankly, for superintendent. There's a job description for every position in the school district.
And you're certified.
I hope so. No, yes, I am definitely certified.
That's all I'm asking, I mean, is, is that just letting any, any person just come in and, and coach because their, their child participates in the sport? I think there, even some special training. I know there's, there's been coaches that were certified and they came to the school district and talked to the coach and asked to, to help out or be an assistant and they were denied. For, I don't know what reason, but for some reason, they were denied and they were certified, they run program, outside programs, they had training experience at the school district. I shouldn't say the school district, the coach said, we don't need you.
Well, I mean, we'll certainly, if you scroll down to the bottom of our agenda for tonight, we're gonna talk about a policy discussion. So, I mean, if we've got policies pertaining to coaching and, and volunteers and their qualifications and things of that nature, I mean, we can certainly look at that as part of that overall review. And we're gonna be looking at everything.
And one, one other quick question, with, with the attachments, when it says attachment one, two, three, four, or five, is there any way that the, the public can get access to that or is that...
Uh, I don't...
I don't know what the board's...
I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know why we don't have the attachments attached. I mean, we, but, I mean, I think we do...
We're trying to say, people, we used to do is print them and put them on the back wall.
Right.
At one time, but to make, I mean, to make 55 copies of, of attachment one, two, three, and four, you're adding 10 pages to each one of those agendas for possibly putting them on the back wall.
We should probably be hanging, we should probably be hanging them on the back wall, but we, I don't, I'm, I'm in agreement with Mr. Sheen, I don't think, there's any reason why we should be printing out, you know, a hundred and, because some of these attachments can be 50 pages long.
Maybe available electronically.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have an issue with that.
If it's posted on the, on the website, somebody can come print it out and bring it, bring it to the...
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any issue with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we should, well, we'll have to check with our solicitor if there's any...
Yeah, I'm not sure if we can do that till they're voted on or they're gonna...
We can check. I, I think it's worth checking.
Yeah.
Okay, you got that in the notes, you know, check with Brian regarding posting attachments for the public view prior to our voting on them.
I think...
I mean, I think some of that, Mr. Cockle, could fall into working documents and things of that nature, so, you know, it may come down to board discretion, what is, you know, innocuous versus something that may be a little bit more sensitive until it's been voted on and that, then it's officially public.
Okay.
Okay?
But I mean, yeah, we're gonna, just to see...
I agree with you, 'cause you're, you're looking at an agenda and you're sitting there going, what is it, what's that attachment? I don't know what the attachment is, so...
But Mr. Beazley, uh, one, real estate or refunds, I don't think that can be posted.
Some things may not be, so we're gonna have to check with our solicitor.
I don't think, some people want their neighbors to know that they've got a refund because they reappraised their property, which most of those refunds are for. I'm just saying, yeah, double check with our attorney, I don't think we can do everything, whatever we can, we more than have to do.
It could be all of school documents, planning, enrollment calendars.
That kind of stuff is no problem.
Sure.
The policies.
Right.
The policies, I think it would be after we vote on, because again, it's not official until it's voted on.
The draft policies.
Draft policies are hanging in the bag.
Policies are.
Even drafted?
Policies are.
Yeah.
Mr. Shat?
I used to attend, when I called down the principal, a lot of the people would be, and they would have two binders available, and we would pass those around or have things there, and I would have all the attachments. I agree, you wouldn't want to print them all. But if I wanted to know the monthly enrollment, for example, then I'd go to the binder and I'd look it up. So that's an idea.
Yep, thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Moving on to programs?
Speaking of attachments, for the new board members, we will provide you with a, a monthly enrollment update that tends not to fluctuate too much, but gives you class-size information, tells you where, how many students we have overall in the district and what we have per building and per grade.
Dr. Otto, regarding that, would it be possible to include in the monthly, monthly enrollment, any changes?
Well, it is, it's a change from the previous month. It's always updated.
You'll get a monthly.
You'll get it monthly.
Does it include, does it show, like, on the actual report, does it show plus or minus so many students?
No, you would have to... So you just compare that to the previous...
You'd have to compare that to the...
Excel sheet or whatever that comes out.
Well, actually, if you look at the high school, it'll have an October and November number, the first sheet.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It's got the previous, and then you can compare it with last year. And compares the same month lag.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Unless there's any glaring trends, I tend to just kind of let you know it's there.
All right, thank you.
We will also be approving our school board meeting calendar, again, for the new board members, that's attachment four. That's again, predicated on the previous scheduling format we've been using. We will also be approving our 2012, just again, for the new board members, and it's the board's responsibility to annually approve the school district's calendar, that is under the school code, a function of the school board, to approve a school district's calendar. Mrs. Trainer has provided you actually with some breakdown beyond that. If you have this sheet that's at your desk, we did provide this in advance, it's just really extra information. Mrs. Trainer, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Just to the calendar in general, there's some changes that we, I suggested to Dr. Otto based on a lot of feedback from staff and administrators over the last couple of years. In the past, prior to what's proposed for next year, we had one day prior to the opening of school where all staff, kindergarten through eighth grade, typically came the Thursday before we kicked off the school year. The high school staff did not report back until the Monday. Some of that has to do with reporting at the end of the year. And an emphasis was put on two days back-to-back in October, when we did a lot of staff development based on Department of Education mandates, that we had to put staff through certain trainings. We had special ed regulation updates, we brought in new curricular initiatives, we did some technology training, and we've, we've now focused a little bit different and we do a lot of work with data development and analysis of data to find the students that are at risk academically. And the Department of Ed for the last two years anyhow, has been somewhat cooperative in providing me with mostly all that PSSA data that we need to start looking at students with by the middle of July. And so I can disaggregate it and have it for administrators even before the school year starts, which now allows them to get it in the hands of teachers before the students ever arrive. The way the, the way the calendar was in the past, between meet the teacher opportunities, we now have half-day kindergarten and we have double the number of parents coming in before the school year starts, the pre-sessions were somewhat limited in what they could do. And so we took a look at some different options. And another component of that that was glaring, as I looked at a lot of reports and heard from the staff, again, as we went to half-day kindergarten, we doubled the number of conferences for all the teachers, was there wasn't enough time in the November conferences to see the parents. That's a compilation of the middle school now going to a lot of child center where the child is there. And in a good conference, K through eight anyhow, if they had 10 minutes with a parent, they were really pushing it. And so one of the clear messages I got from both my professional leadership and development committee and the administrators was they needed more time. And so they were willing to sacrifice one of the October in-service days, if we could move some time around. And so a little creative work of putting more time in August, taking time away from October, and also a staff development day that was either a health fair or something that we didn't feel was as valuable as time when data and with parents, we took out of the spring, because we didn't wanna sacrifice any time before PSSA starts and that spread from the beginning of March pretty much to the end of April. And so all that put together, you have in front of you something that looks a little bit different, where elementary would actually come the Wednesday and Thursday before the school year starts and the high school would come one day before the school year starts, which gives Mr. McComol a full day with his staff and not just three hours after the, the kickoff on the opening staff day. You have the same, this calendar then is the basis where I build five different staff calendars to make sure it's aligned with their contracts. calendars to make sure it's aligned with their contracts, so we print one for our 259-day employees, our 254-day and professional staff, and so on. So this gives me the 180 student days that's required by the Department of Ed. This is the basis for what then I file with the Department of Ed to sanction any half-days and full-days. We eliminated a half-day, which is always more troublesome for parents than good, because they're looking for babysitting for the afternoon half. So, this gives us, if you look at my other schematic I gave you, it gives us two more hours of conference time. It also gives the kids off the whole week before Thanksgiving, and we use that as our basic conference time. That's a new model that a lot of school districts in the county are starting to use, more evening and after, and daytime opportunities for parents. It gives everybody more time in August to actually sit and look at team-level data documents, to be able to get a plan that they don't have to wait till October to start looking at. And we also, in a good year without a lot of inclement weather, would end on June the 5th. So, one of the reasons I asked Dr. Otto to bring it here was just because of the difference in the August setup, that I'd like staff to know as soon as possible that it is a little bit different than it was in the past, but it meets a lot of the needs that I heard across the district and also from different players that are part of this. So, I don't know if anybody has any other questions.
I have one.
Kevin?
Does it meet the BCTC start dates?
Yes.
Okay, see.
I didn't start any different than we did in previous years.
Okay, so, okay.
Yep. And then if we had a half-day, typically, we would allow the kids to go in the morning if it's a half-day session, and so we've worked that through just as we do any other year.
Okay. Okay?
And on item D, seeing no questions, we'll move forward. Just a late-minute typo, we want to alert you to, just for the new board members within district policy, any students that either are out of state or overnight, out of, out of the country, definitely need board approval. So, this group is coming to you for a trip that is scheduled for 2013, so they're way out in front of the approval to give them time to raise money. No, that should be a typo, that should be fixed. That's the typo. Just for the public's benefit, the item should read April 1, 2013. So they want approval knowing going forward that they can do fundraising and have time to raise the money for this trip. And again, that is a trip, as you notice, which the board always asks us to do for the new board members, to indicate how it will be paid, so it is not funded by the district, it is paid by students. So that concludes my report on the program.
Any questions by board members? Okay, any comments from the public? All right, on to policy.
Just again, since for the newly seated board members, policy always goes through a two-month reading process, we posted this last month, this is the second reading, and at the end of that process, then you officially vote on it, and it becomes a revised, in this case, it's a revised policy. For your information, the board has added the curriculum and instruction committee to this policy to become a standing committee, and that's the only change.
I have a question. Can we add, can we change this organization about, is it, I'm sorry, is this about the, also the reorganization? Should we encompass what the changes we made tonight? Should we go have a more detail in our policy, electing the president as president?
We can do that during the policy review.
Okay. You understand my question?
Yeah. You want to piggyback that onto '05 now?
What we did tonight, I think should be more detailed in our policy, because our policy's kind of vague.
We have a year before we do that. I'd like to approve...
Oh, I agree.
'05, so we can get that as a standing committee.
That's fine.
You can bring it up again in another month.
That's fine, but I think it's...
So we can seek people in January, and otherwise, it's the same committee, because it'll be, it'll be an ad hoc committee.
Okay.
Seek that, and then this policy review committee, which is item B, can look into revising how we elect officials.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I'm just asking a question, let's, let's expand on that policy to meet what we, what we kind of went through tonight.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. It's a good question. I think, yeah, I'm with Walter on that one, that we want to make sure that we get the, the CNI committee in place.
That's fine.
So that we can, people can put their votes towards where they want to sit on those committees.
I'll turn B over to you.
Yeah, B is basically, you know, one of policy review. I mean, every now and then, things come up, and we go back to our policy, and we realize that maybe our policy doesn't really address that issue quite the way it could, and some of our policies are dated, and they need to be updated. Sometimes the language isn't quite right to fit a specific situation, so I think it's probably important that we sit down and review our policies. We've usually done them onesie-twosie on an as-needed basis. We never gone back and done a, at least in the four years I've been here, done a comprehensive...
We did do it about six years ago.
Yeah. I think it's time...
Mrs. Spassett ran, was the chair of that, but it, it was, it was not at the detail level that we need to look at again, because things have changed drastically over the six years.
So, we need to go through, the suggestion is to go through, form a committee, have that committee go through our policy, all of them, one at a time, you know, and, and review them. I mean, we need to take a look at how we, we review administrative personnel, we need to take a look at, you know, our organization policy in terms of how we elect and nominate board members to positions, you know, there's just a whole host of different things that we can be looking at and improving upon.
One of the things that we can help you with administratively, I've been through a policy review process in, in prior districts, I would recommend that you take the numerical designation of the policies, and for you have zero policies, that's your board operational policies, 100 student and pupils, 200s are, I think, professional staff, I might be wrong with the actual numbers, but I would take those and allow us administratively to bring forward the ones that we look either outdated or haven't been touched recently, because every policy has written on the form already, last time it was updated, and you could designate a period of time, if, if it's outside of that five-year or 10-year period, we need to look at that. Ones that you just did within the last two to three years, I recommend, if they're, we can review them for you, if we tell you there's no need to look at them and they're sound, I'd let them go. I mean, there's really no need to touch them, or the task will be too daunting.
There, there are, there are a ton of them. I think we need to look right, start right at the triple zeros, which is the board policies.
That's operational policies for you.
Yeah, operational policies, and look at them, and like you said, there's one, there's two of them that were looked at in 2010, one looked at 2011, and then you're looking at, you know, 1992, 1993.
Right, those I think you need to pull out.
But even the one that was done a couple of years ago, I, just a quick cursory look to make sure that it's where we're running now, it's not a bad...
Frankly, when I did it in the last school district where I did it, we found policies, we just rescinded them. They weren't applicable anymore, they didn't need to be on the books, we voted on them, rescinded, pull them out of the book, they're gone. So, I, I think it's a good exercise to become involved in. But I just want to say that between Mrs. Trainor and me, I mean, it's something that I, I have an interest in, obviously, as superintendent, making sure all the policies are what they need to be to protect the district legally, so it's, it's something that I can certainly get involved in and, and help move forward.
Do we need to formalize this, any kind of vote, or does the board want to give the administrative, the administration the authority to sort of start that process and begin reviewing our policies?
I would make a suggestion to be an ad hoc committee, and you ask people if they want to volunteer in it for us.
Right.
I wouldn't make it a standing committee, once it's done, it's done.
Right.
It's a task, right.
Correct.
It's a finite task.
Again, submit your, your request of participating in that committee.
Okay.
If, I'm sorry, we done with that one? Because I actually have something on further on committees.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
The other thing I have is, are we, or is there any ad hoc committees standing out there that we'd fill, and I believe there is one.
Uh, there's transportation is still there.
And we have registries.
That's the economic revitalization committee.
Okay, that, okay, that's going to take care of that one.
That's under that.
That's fine, okay. We do have, other than transportation, there's, and this policy, where is there any more ad hoc committees?
Negotiations.
Currently, I don't know if we want to give any thought or interest into temporarily having an ad hoc committee that deals with the technology of the school district, considering that we lost our, our tech guy, our tech director. I don't know if it has merit or value or not, but we can think about it, and if we think we need to give some attention to that.
Can we, Mr. Semerero, can we rail, can you wrap that in buildings and grounds?
Yeah, I guess you could.
Again, for, too many ad hoc committees, after a while, we're all in like seven committees plus BCTC, BCIU, you're out 15 times in a month, you're not going to do it. Can you roll some kind of that in with Mr. Potts?
Yeah, you can do it in a two-part, if you put it in facilities, because I don't think Ken would want to stay.
No, but I, but I think you could do, you could, again, it has to do with buildings and everything else, maybe we could do that.
Technology overlaps a lot, depending on the nature of your discussion.
Correct.
It could be, it could be in curriculum and instruction.
Right.
It's just a thought.
I have a question about registries, Dean, what does that have to do with economic revitalization?
It doesn't really, but we were looking for a, a committee that could take a look at that, and one that had representation from the three different municipalities that consist, that make up the school district.
Yeah, we voted, because you had, you already had the three in place, we, we appointed them to do that.
Okay.
There was no designation, need to do that, as to how it had to be done, it just needed to be done.
To Mr. McCullough's point, we, you know, we've got committees coming out the wazoo sometimes, and if you're on four or five of them, you know, you just, it's, it's too much.
I think all that committee is going to do is look at several options and bring a recommendation back to the board.
But, again, just put it on, I figure technology and things, I, yeah, but rather forming a, you know, standing or an ad hoc, just try to roll it into something either, either curriculum or buildings and grounds, I think either one, like you said, split the meeting, Mr. Smith, leave after we do the...
We can figure it out.
I think facilities would probably be the best place for that, because it does have to do with capital investments and things of that nature.
Yeah, there's, there's three of them.
It could.
We could add a new one.
We, Mrs. Hartsley used to sit on the facilities committee, so we, there's, there's an open seat there for the next month and a half, and then...
As long as you got three, I mean...
Yeah.
No, but I think, I think all honesty, Mr. Semenero should probably be somehow on that committee if we're going to start discussing technology.
Absolutely.
It's just my personal opinion, but...
As we mentioned at the last meeting, whatever, whatever you need, Dr. Otto, it'll never help you need in that area.
While you're looking for your... Speaking of, speaking of technology, where are we on?
We'll have part of our executive section under personnel.
I'm sorry.
Okay, any other board comment on policies? Okay, seeing none, any public comment on policies? All right.
No report.
Old business?
Nothing from the superintendent.
Okay.
Oh, I have something on old business. I know a while back, maybe a month or two ago, Mrs. Spassett mentioned about putting Mr. Suber's former, his old opinions on the district board member portal, so we could see them. Is there any movement on that? Is that still something the board would be...
I think the board, the consensus of the board was, we wanted all the legal opinions in one place, so we could refer to them, and we weren't going to be spending a lot of money asking Mr. Suber's to give us opinions on things that we, he's already rendered opinions on. I think that got stalled when we lost our technology director, but...
We'll be bringing that up, we just haven't, we haven't, we haven't lost sight of that.
There's a lot of scanning that needs to be done, and we need, and uploading, and a, and a whole portal page built and everything, so as soon as we get our technology person back on board, that, that should be...
I would show the scope of it.
It'll be rather time-consuming, so we're going to need to make sure we plan that accordingly.
Okay.
Okay, but that's a good reminder. New business, nothing from...
I have something. Next meeting, is it possible to either Skype or telephone for me?
Sure, just let us know.
And, and, maybe, I'm not sure, but I like that option. I will be out of town. Second thing is, who will then take over as board secretary? This is a voting...
I guess, first of all, policies, you're supposed to notify board president.
Okay, I'm notifying, I'll be out of town.
Board president needs to say yes or no.
Yes.
I do know I'm out of town.
If it's about the policy, let's look at the policy.[1675.82]